I'd like to welcome all of you here in Town Hall and those of you who are watching from home, welcome to the Placerville City Council. Tonight is January 23rd, 2018, and we're delighted you're joining us tonight. So with that, would you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Okay. With that, may we have the roll call, please, Regina?
Vice Mayor Acuna?
Here.
Councilmember Borelli?
Here.
Mayor Thomas?
Here.
Councilmember Clarici?
Here.
Councilmember Wilkins?
Here.
All right. Well, before we get on to the announcements and presentations to the public, I'd just like to personally thank everyone's patience last night with the developing incident that happened in our city and our county. That was a challenging situation, and with that, I'd like our city manager to give us an update on that situation with our water supply. Cleve?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to read a brief statement that I put together. The water emergency occurring at EID facilities yesterday was a tragic event, and our condolences go out to the victim's family. This was an unusual event that was completely unexpected, as most emergencies are. However, this one had some unique circumstances we had to respond to. We have procedures in place in case our system is contaminated or if we have to shut down a specific area of the city. It is not expected, however, in this case where we potentially could have the entire system shut down at once, so it created some unusual circumstances for us. We have learned from the incident and are working on some procedures to ensure we respond appropriately in the future. I want to assure you that in talking to our staff as well as officials from EID, that at no time was our water quality in jeopardy. There was nothing to worry about there. If that would have occurred, I can promise there would have been more severe notices and measures would have been taken to let everyone know of the problem. We have some work to do with EID to make sure we can jointly handle any water emergency that arises in the future. Last night, we were in close communication with EID and with Eldorado County Emergency Services to respond as necessary to the emergency. Our police chief and one of our police commanders were at the County Emergency Operations Center throughout the event. I was in close contact with them, as well as our city water personnel and with the city council. As with any emergency, we learned from the event, and we will be better prepared because of it. Thank you.
Thank you. And our heart just goes out to the family in this really tragic, really tragic, avoidable incident. Any members, any questions from councilmembers? All right. Thank you to everyone who was involved in handling that evolving situation last night. And speaking of emergency situations, I'm going to switch up item 3.2 and start with that. We have an exemplary business in our community that handled an emergency situation incredibly well last week, and we are here this week celebrating their commitment to their residents rather than hearing about it on the news. And so with that, I'd like to invite Jared, he's the administrator of the pines at Placerville, to come on up and like, oh, thank you, and I'd like to recognize what happened last week. Just right there at the podium, Jared, thank you so much. That last week, there was a fire in the Placerville pines, and his staff followed their protocol and their training to a letter and ensured the safety of all of their residents. And I'd like to read a little statement from Fire Chief Hardy, who was certainly an integral part of that evening. Chief Hardy wrote me, "The Placerville pines did have a little fire in one of their rooms last night, and their staff did an amazing job with not only recognizing the imminent need to evacuate their residents, but also to properly deploy a fire extinguisher on the fire, essentially extinguishing it prior to our arrival." And Chief Hardy's words were, "I'm very impressed with our staff and supervision in recognizing and implementing their emergency guidelines and the care and concern for the nursing home guests." And I don't think we often recognize excellence in our community and celebrate these times when things go well and there's a wonderful outcome. So with that, Jared, we're delighted you're here, and we would like, on behalf of the entire city council and city staff, recognize your staff's care for some of the most vulnerable residents in our community, and please, you know, extend our thanks and congratulations to them. And I do have a plaque, but would love for you to say a few words if you'd like.
Sure. Thank you so much, Mayor Thomas, and city council for this recognition. The staff at the pines at Placerville are an amazing group of individuals who work hard every day to take care of some of our most frail residents in this community. It's been my pleasure and my honor to be a part of that team for the past five years and to watch them grow and to succeed. You never want to get that phone call telling you that there's an emergency in your building, but it made me feel so wonderful to know that the staff took the training that they had to heart, followed the procedures, and were able to take care of it in a very quick and professional manner and keep every one of our residents safe that night. And I'm just honored to be a part of that.
Wow, that's, we just really commend you for your excellent care. And I'd also like you to briefly share, Jared and I were speaking just a few minutes before the council members, council meeting started, about the training program that you have at your facility that I had no idea existed for our, can you just briefly describe that?
Sure. One of the things that's really important to us is that we give back to the community as well, and we want to be able to help out people in this community that are trying to better their lives and get better job opportunities out there for them. So we have partnered with Sunrise School of Nursing in which we are able to take people and get them trained through the Certified Nursing Program. The cost to them is usually about $1,000, but the company ourselves, we eat the cost of that to help train some of our local people so that they can have jobs as Certified Nursing Assistance. Together with Western Slope, we've been doing this for about a year, and we've put through about 85 resident, local people through the program that now are employed as Certified Nursing Assistance between our two buildings, and some have gone on to other places as well, such as Gold Country or even Marshall Hospital.
Wow, that's remarkable. Well, thank you for, you know.
I just have a real quick comment. I'm so happy to hear about this program because we used to have an ROP class through the high school, and it was discontinued because of lack of funds. And I do know some people that graduated that program, and I was just so sorry when it ended, so I'm happy to hear that you have this program that kind of takes that place. So that's very interesting.
Well, thank you, Swenja. It's our honor to have that program. The need for Certified Nursing Assistance is great in this community.
Yes.
So it is a benefit to the community. What's also nice is it's a stepping stone for a lot of them who want to get into the medical field. It's a good place for them to start, to see if they enjoy it, to see if they like it. Many of our nurses started off as Certified Nursing Assistance and became nurses, went on to get their RN, so it's a progression for them, so hopefully this is-
That must make you feel proud.
You know, there, it is really nice to see somebody who's been a CNA for a number of years get that nursing license and get to make that transition. It's great to be a part of that.
That's remarkable. Any other comments from councilmembers? So with that, I would like to present you with a certificate of recognition presented to the pines at Placerville in grateful recognition of the professionalism of staff in recognizing and implementing emergency guidelines and for the care and concern shown to the nursing home guests during the emergency of January 17th, 2018. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Perfect. All right. And with that, we're going to go back to brief comments by the city council. I'll start with you, Patty?
Oh.
Councilmember Borelli?
Okay. I just, real quick, wanted to say that I went to the Eldorado Arts Council at the Fausel House. They had their, they've started their new program, I'm going to call it, and it's called "The Games of Winter," and they're featuring the 1960 Winter Olympics in Squaw Valley. And, you know, that was so close to home, and I remember as a kid, I, you know, all that going on. Anyway, they've got a lot of memorabilia that they've collected from different people commemorating that, and I didn't write it down, and I'm not sure, they have a wonderful little brochure. This, the Fausel House Art Gallery is open to the public, and I really would recommend anybody that's got a few minutes to go up and see what they're doing. And they're going to have a speaker who's written a book, and I don't think it's in here, and I'm really sorry, I think it's February 23rd, but I'm not real, real sure. Anyway, he, an author, and he's going to give a presentation, so I'm going to try and get there for that. But I just wanted to really recommend that if you have a few minutes, pop up there and check it out.
Thank you so much. Vice Mayor Acuna?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just like to take a minute, we had a small reception this evening to thank our outgoing mayor, and I would, since we had a very heavy agenda at the last meeting, we didn't get an opportunity to really thank, I didn't get an opportunity to thank former Mayor Clarici for his hard work and dedication last year and the personal touch and the emotions and his dedication to the city. It's obvious to me that he has a great deal of care and concern for Placerville, and he really tried last year to continue to keep us focused and move us forward, created a positive atmosphere at most of the meetings, and I appreciated his honesty and his hard work, so nice job.
Actually, I'll piggyback on that. We are, we had a little reception prior to this for outgoing mayor, outgoing Mayor Clarici, and so please, help yourself to cake back there and coffee. This is not, you won't get this at every city council meeting, but please help yourself in honor of John. And with that, we do have a certificate, John, a certificate of recognition presented to John Clarici in grateful recognition for outstanding leadership and service during his 2017 term as the mayor of Placerville. And it was an honor to serve with you, and your leadership was just very much appreciated, John. Your unique flair to city governance was also, it was great. It was awesome.
Those are good words to describe a unique flair.
Unique flair, I'll have to write that one down. Thank you very much. These are your kind words, and this is just very touching. It's an easy job to do when you've got a great city with great staff and great people. And so, yes, I probably used a little too much levity at times for some folks' desires, but like I've said all along, this is, this is an easy job because of where we are and who we are and the people that are around us. So, once a year, the mayor gets to take a bow and, but it's really not me, it's all of you. But anyway, thank you very much for all your kind words. I do appreciate it.
Councilmember Wilkins?
Oh, he already spoke.
All right. All right. And with that, we are on item 3.3, and it's our privilege to welcome Kathy Germstad. Does that get that correct, Kathy? All right. So come on down to the podium, and we have a presentation tonight on reducing wildlife vehicle collisions. And I've heard Kathy speak a number of times, and she's just incredibly well-informed, and thank you for helping us understand this situation that's probably new to a lot of folks. So, welcome.
So, just to start out, you know, this talk will have two points to it mostly. One is just the description of why we need animal road crossings, and the other point is basically I'll be talking about hotspots in your city, what's working, what's not working, possible solutions, and maybe some funding opportunities. So, why do we need animal road crossings? Well, from a biological-
Go ahead and speak in the microphone, Kathy, sitting here.
From a biological point of view, it's so loud. From a biological point of view, animals need to find food and water. They also need to migrate to mate. They need to, the young needs to disperse so that they can avoid becoming an insular population where inbreeding occurs. When inbreeding occurs, the population becomes very unhealthy. From our point of view, from the human point of view, motorist safety is also very important. The estimated cost of wildlife vehicle collisions is 8.4 billion per year in the United States. That's a, it's a big number. It's a number that comes out of a report by the Federal Highway Administration to Congress in 2008. So wildlife vehicle collisions, they're dependent on, the severity is dependent on the size of the animal, the likelihood is dependent on the velocity of the car, the velocity of the animal, and also traffic volume. A lot of people think that deer should be able to avoid cars, but the fact of the matter is that deer don't see the way we see. And I've included a video there, if you ever have an opportunity to look at it, it's very informative. But in a nutshell, the pupil of a deer's eye is horizontal, and they are hardwired to see things moving across their landscape. So if something is moving towards them, they don't see it as moving. It's just getting slightly bigger, a little bit at a time, so they don't recognize that a car is moving towards them. Additionally, they have reflective tissue on the back of their eye, which amplifies the light coming in. So headlights coming at them blinds them, typical deer in the headlight. So, a little political background here, you know, in 2007, the Western Governors Association approved Resolution 70701, which spawned a number of programs, granting programs, initiatives, and reports that are still being carried out today. I included on that slide some examples of the type of animal crossing structures that have been installed since that time in the western states, and there's a number of types Closer to home, in California, I think the first intentional wild, animal undercrossing went in north of Truckee on Highway 89. That was in 2009. On I-80 east of Truckee, there are three box culverts that are constructed, and recently, near Newcastle on 193, there was a box culvert installed, and they put a ledge in, which is really cool, and I want to come back to that a little bit later, because it not only serves as a conduit for water, but it also serves as a conduit for animals going under the road. Very nice system. Caltrans has a showcase overcrossing project in Southern California called Liberty Canyon, and there's our own, very own box culvert near Eldorado Road. That's Suzie Mellem standing there. She was a, she was the biologist from Caltrans on that project. I hear a lot of bad talk about this culvert still, and I carry in my phone photographs of it being used by deer and other animals. And just to demonstrate, there is actually a video that shows three months of animals using that undercrossing, and it's time-lapse, and we're just going to look at a few nights and days, but you can see that it's being used very successfully, and it's, it's a good thing. I mean, our county did good. I mean, it was great. People that were involved in this, Shelley was involved from Fish and Game, some of the transportation, Dan Bolster was involved in that, you know, Brian Veercamp, I believe. So you can, you can probably kill that. That goes on for quite a while, and that's at UC Davis on their website. You can look at the whole thing. It's quite long, though. Can you hit escape so I can move forward? That works. Okay. So now I need to switch gears a little bit, and we're going to talk about Placerville in particular. And so this is a spatial representation of roadkill in Placerville along Highway 50. And I separated out the deer from everything that was not deer. Three things you need to know about this data is that three, 13 years of data is missing, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. The lane in which the deer or the animal was picked up is not known, and what you always have to keep in mind when you're looking at roadkill data is that it only tells you where animals unsuccessfully crossed. It does not tell you where animals are crossing successfully or how many are crossing successfully. So it's only a partial picture. I start on the east end, and you have data, I think, in your packet that you could follow along, but I went through each of these bridges and scouted it out and gathered evidence to look at animal traffic. So on the Point View Drive exit, there are some deer strikes there, but they're all from the '90s, so I pretty much dismissed that as being informative because the bridge has changed since then. So this is a neighborhood associated, I think, because there's all these houses in there. I'm quite interested in the Smith Flat Bridge. It's wildlife-friendly, there's no ramps, and I really don't know why there's so much deer strike there. They're all in 2015 except for one of them, so it begs the question, why? Because it's a beautiful undercrossing, they have plenty of room to go under. I find deer tracks, I find other animal tracks, I also find human footprints going up under the bridge. So I think that's, might be the why the deer are going over the freeway instead of underneath. There's also this culvert on the, on the left-hand side that probably serves as a pretty good amphibian animal crossing. So, that's Schnell School Road. It's not working very well at all, and I noticed that Caltrans cleared some vegetation and put a new right-of-way fencing on the north side. Hopefully that helps. That is by Carson Road Overpass. I drove up in there one day, and a doe escorted me into the cul-de-sac and then went up to a house and went on her deck. So it's, it's pretty well neighborhood-associated, probably those roadkills there. Mosquito Road Bridge is a very, very nice, it's a long bridge, it has natural substrate, it's, it goes through the creek right there, there's vegetated parcels nearby where they can hang out. It's working very, very well as a wildlife undercrossing. Clay Street and Locust Avenue, no, no roadkill data there. You have to ask why, but I do talk to the public, and I do talk to proprietors, and they tell me that they see deer coming under those two bridges. So with the Clay Street realignment coming up, I hope that you consider that and not present obstacles so that they are forced to go over the freeway. Just a note. I do have some pictures there of evidence going under Locust Avenue. Clay Street's all cement, can't get, can't get prints or anything there. So the Placerville Drive area, I could spend a lot of time on this, on this slide, and I don't want to because I know time is short, but prior to the expressway being built in 1962, this area was a contiguous piece of land. And I first got intrigued by all the deer that I saw gathered on the ridge above Placerville Drive off-ramp, and I put cameras up by Kobe's Pest Control and on Mace Court and documented that there's a lot of deer activity up there. And deer trails leading down to the underpass there, they actually walk under the underpass, they come down onto Placerville Drive and go across the bridge over Hangtown Creek and go up behind Home Depot, and then they eventually make their way over by Big Five and Sears Buildings, cross Placerville Drive, down Vissini's Equipment Yard where the creek is. So what we have is a very linear greenbelt with a riparian corridor associated with it. So I don't, I don't think that any, other than mitigating their passage of Highway 50, I don't think that there's much more that can be done. There is a culvert, a very large culvert that Hangtown Creek goes through that could be retrofitted with a ledge to allow animals to cross under. That would be a very frugal way to actually put in an animal crossing. And there's also three ravines that I've looked at that could facilitate a box culvert. Two are east of Ray Lawyer Drive where we see a lot of roadkill in that area, and there's a ridge in between those two ravines that could facilitate a land bridge. I know that the Placerville Interchain Project is ramping up again, no pun intended. But you actually could leverage this project with a number of funding opportunities, especially if you use the words riparian corridor. That is a bell ringer. And I pulled up some, some grant programs today on the web that actually, you know, is just basically about riparian corridors. So that's pretty much the gist of this. What I try to, want to try to get back out to you is that there are bridges that are working, and this is an area that could be mitigated with additional funding. So what to do? You can enlarge culverts when you're rebuilding them, or you can place ledges in them to help animals go through. You can, when you renovate bridges, you cannot put too much riprap in because that deer can't navigate through there. And you can protect the bridges that are already working. And I did not talk about the Vietnam Memorial Bridge yet. That's that picture, that slide, and my colleague Shelley and I went down in that area not too long, last fall actually, with binoculars and cameras, and we documented all kinds of animal prints and scat and game trails. If you go on satellite, you can see the game trails readily. It's being used as a, it's a beautiful wildlife undercrossing. What else? Caltrans does not require that its person, maintenance personnel write down or record the carcasses they pick up. It's, it's not mandatory, and so it's just on a volunteer basis. And you can't make educated decisions with missing data. So that would be really nice if you could ask Caltrans to do that for you. The other thing is you could put up deer crossing signs and reduce the speed limit around the Ray Lawyer Drive area. I only put the slide in to show that what happened in 2007 with the Resolution 071 has trickled down into the states. It's now in the, in the county documents, and so what I'm hoping for is that it also influences cities in California. And that's the end of my slideshow. I don't need to talk about this. These are all live links, funding opportunities, and informational resources.
Well, Kathy, thank you so much, and appreciate your advocacy on behalf of our natural species, and I also appreciate the links. That's always very helpful, especially funding links.
Okay.
Any council comments or questions?
Kathy, I know you've done this presentation, have you done it for transportation? I don't recall you being there, so, and that's, there's three of us that serve on that commission, and that would be interesting to have, because like you say, we're, you know, we're ramping up a lot of projects, so.
Right. I would be happy to give this, and I don't know if you would want it on the Placerville-only area, or if you would want it on wider projects.
That's probably something you could talk to with our director.
Okay. That would be awesome. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you again for being here tonight, Kathy. Thank you so much. All right. Very interesting. With that, we are on item four, closed session report. City Attorney Driscoll, do you have anything to report?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight, the council confirmed and ratified an agreement with the Unified Confidential and Supervisory Employee Unit, extending the tentative agreement, which was reached last year with them, for another year. The agreement also includes the increase of space salary by two and a half percent, which is similar to the increases given to other bargaining units in the city.
All right. Thank you very much. We are, the adoption of the agenda, does the council have any changes to the agenda?
I'll move the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We already did our ceremonial matters, and that brings us to public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for you, persons that wish to address the council on any matter not on the agenda that is within our jurisdiction. And we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, and please come to the podium and state your name for the record. And before I get into the oral comments, I'd like to acknowledge that the council did receive a letter from Sue Taylor on item 10.1 that is later in our agenda. Is there any other written communication? All right. So with that, you're invited to come forward and speak on anything you want that's not on our agenda. All right. With that, we will close public comment and come back to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one roll call motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. Does any member wish to do that? No. Actually, I do. I'd like us to pull item 8.6, and that's on the aquatic schedule. And do I have a motion to approve that?
I'll approve with that, with the exception of-
8.6.
8.6.
Second.
All right. Roll call, please.
Public comment on that.
Oh, I'm so, so sorry, I'm rusty at this. Does any member wish to speak on any item on the consent calendar? All right. With that, we will have the roll call, please. Vice Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Clarici?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkins? All right. All right. We will now hear item 8.6, and the item is to adopt a resolution approving new participant fees and program schedule for the Placerville Aquatic- Oh, I'm so, so sorry. I'm rusty at this. Does any member wish to speak on any item on the consent calendar? All right. With that, we will have the roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Clarici?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkins?
All right. All right. We will now hear item 8.6. And, um, the item is to adopt a resolution approving new participant fees and program schedule for the Plasterville Aquatic Center effective April 1st. And, um, we don't really need to go through the, the whole staff report. Um, the reason I pulled the item tonight is I just have a, a brief question for staff. And in looking at the schedule for the next year, and first of all, I would like to, um, recognize that the extended schedule for lap swim, I know that was a, a big need and, and desire in our community to have adults, um, have, have their availability to the pool through Labor Day. And, uh, thank you for accommodating that. My question is, is we are extending per this schedule, the lap swimming from August 6th through September 3rd, Monday through Friday from 4:30 to 5:30 and on weekends. Would it also be possible, and of course it's possible, but I guess, what would the impact be if we also extended our public swim, uh, for the kids of our community from perhaps 3 o'clock to 4:30, Monday through Friday, from August 6th through September 3rd? Um, I know there's, you know, I got a lot of comments last year from kids, well, how come, you know, once school starts, the pool is closed during the week and, uh, when it's still, you know, blisteringly hot? And what would the impact be of extending the public swim during that time?
First of all, it's possible for sure. Um, the impact associated with that would be additional costs.
Sure.
At a time when, um, the attendance doesn't support the, the amount of staffing that it takes during that time. Uh, but it's something we can go back and look at. Um, I'm not really prepared to, to answer, um, all of the ramifications of that right, that, right this minute, but it's definitely something that, uh, we in the Recreation Parks Commission can take a look at.
It, I was thinking perhaps if we, um, you know, advertised it for the rest of the year and perhaps had, you know, big banners and let folks know that that was a possibility that might increase attendance. Um, I don't know if, if that's just something the council wishes to consider. Councilmember Borelli?
Um, Steve, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought, um, that the re, one of the biggest reasons we couldn't do it is because the lifeguards all went back to school.
It does create a challenge, um, to do that, but we're only talking about a little bit more time. So, like I say, I needed to go back and talk to staff and, and see if that's feasible.
And I'm wondering about that. Um, you said an, an hour and a half?
An hour and a half, yeah. Or we could even do it 3:30 to 4:30, an hour before the lap swim starts.
Well, I'm, I'm projecting, but, uh, we keep hearing that a large portion of our, the kids that come there in the county. So, I mean, by the time they get out of school and then get back, you know, to, I, I'm just wondering time-wise if it would work out. So I, I'm not against it, believe me, but I'm just.
You just had to ask the question.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I have a question too with Patty. Um, is that because I have elementary school children?
Right.
Um, I cannot imagine at 4:30 getting out of school, going to the pool, coming home and doing homework, eating dinner, taking baths. I, I, what I was taught, what, what Steve just said is, is the, is it gonna, is the attendance gonna support having it open? Cause personally, and they love to swim. They'll be there all night till 9:30 in the summertime if they're allowed to, but.
Yeah.
On a school night when, I don't know.
Okay, good, good point. Good question.
I can see with the lap and the, you know, the elderly or whatever, but.
I can't tell you how many people and one lady in particular, every time I see her, she thanks us for extending the lap. Uh, and I have to say, when my daughter was visiting here this summer, she also par took. She's met a lot of really nice ladies.
And actually I have one more follow-up question. Um, has the county participated in helping us fund the pool, um, this next budget cycle?
They had, did we get it this last year, Steve?
Traditionally, they have for the last, uh, three or four years. Uh, we just got notification that they want us to re-submit our request again for this year and years going forward by resolution. So I'll be coming back with a staff report, uh, with that recommendation within the next month.
Okay, all right.
That's so important.
I have a question for staff now. How long have we been doing $20,000? How long? I mean, give me a ballpark. Yeah, it's not a trick question.
I think it's just two years.
Well, how much, prior to that, it was. It was less. Oh, okay. So we've actually upped the amount of money over time.
Right.
I keep hearing this $20,000 and it, you know, it's like anything else with inflation. It doesn't buy you as much.
Didn't they take it away one year?
Oh, yeah, they, many years.
All right. With that, would any member of the public like to speak on this item? All right. No swimmers. All right. No takers. All right. We'll bring this back to the council.
I'll move approval on the item.
Second?
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries, all right.
Well, I'm just, is there a request to look at that further?
No, move approval of the item as is. Yeah, and motion passed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciated the discussion.
You know, maybe Wendy, if you, we, I mean, summertime, we, we could take a, have the people up there at the pool.
Look at it next year.
Take a, a, like a little questionnaire and see how many would be interested, you know?
Okay, good idea.
Would you be interested?
All right. Um, with that, we are on item 10.1, Introduce an Ordinance Adopting Changes to Title IX of the Plasterville Municipal Code Related to Parking. And this is just a cleanup ordinance. With that, Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you recall, at your last meeting, uh, we brought this ordinance to you and there were some more cleanup items that we had missed and some corrections and et cetera and some requests that came from the public. So, um, what you have before you tonight is the ordinance we presented last week with the changes that we're recommending based on input that we received at that time. So, um, I can quickly go through those. Item one is listed into the discussion items. Item 3.3G, change the word daily to Monday through Saturday to address that. Um, 3.3G also expanded the parking on Main Street from 617 Main Street up to Sheridan. It's actually a little bit past Sheridan. Um, that was an area where there previously there was listed a commercial zone within that and that's been removed now. It's no longer necessary. Uh, item 945, change language to have all lot descriptions in the office of the city clerk rather than listing them in the ordinance. Item 946B1, signs indicate permit parking is Monday through Friday. The proposed ordinance originally indicated seven days per week. Staff recommends Monday through Saturday, the same as our enforcement. So permit parking would be Monday through Saturday for all permit parking, um, which means that on a Sunday, you can park anywhere anyway because there is no enforcement. So the permit parking is somewhat a moot point on that day. Number five, item 9.46C1, eliminate the requirement to display receipt when paying for parking. That was just an item that was missed. Um, there were some more items that were requested, um, that we didn't make the change at this time. And I, I want to just go through those briefly. It was talked about Ivy House Lot is limited to parking only up to 9:00 PM. Uh, this was instituted, um, approximately 10 years ago is my understanding due to problems when the viewing area that was created adjacent to Hangtown Creek. Uh, police experienced numerous problems during the late hours in this area due to vandalism and other criminal activity. Um, so that's why that was put in place to try to cut down on, uh, that type of activity. It is possible for, like the Cosmic Cafe, if they have a late event going on that they want to, uh, extend that, they can get a permit to allow parking in there later, uh, on, on an individual basis. Town Hall Lot has 12-minute parking spaces designed to assist the public who come to sign up for classes. Uh, recreation staff has expressed there's not really a concern with this. It seems to work. Uh, if the public need to stay longer, as always, they can stay, they can park in the two-hour parking that is also available, um, in the parking lot. Um, and the, just so you know, those, these 12-minute parking spaces, if you will, are primarily enforced by our recreation department staff because we don't have somebody that's coming around every 12 minutes to see if those cars are moving. So, uh, section 9 through 3, Commercial Loading Zone, it was requested that the policy be amended to allow merchants to use the zones for unloading of supplies and passengers. Um, this would be difficult to enforce because we cannot always identify merchants' vehicles. And so how do we know that? In addition, the city can issue special permits to, uh, to businesses who need them on a regular basis to unload supplies and merchandise. So that's an option that we can do administratively, even though it's not in the ordinance. Unless the council tells me differently, I feel that's something that we can do administratively on an as-needed basis. Backing into stalls, this one's a little bit more interesting and I admit, we have not been enforcing backing into stalls for, for many years for various reasons. Um, but I, I did look into this a little bit. The reason for this section, uh, to not allow backing into a lot is because, uh, the damages that it can cause to fences and facilities. Um, if you're interested in looking, I do have some pictures that show, uh, the Center Street Lot. Um, and these are kind of small. You can't see it very well, but if you can see the fences, how the poles are bent, there are the fence. Um, there's one more that shows where one of the posts was actually broken off. That one right there, you can see the hole in the concrete where the fence post was and the fence is behind it. It's been broken off. Primarily, I believe this is done when vehicles back in because the back of your vehicle is normally longer than the front.
I didn't even think about that. I was wondering how that fence could, could set back shape.
So, so that's why if you look in the ordinance, the, the, um, the lots, the parking lots that are listed are those that have this situation where there's a fence close to the, the parking area. So specifically, uh, those parking lots are the ones that are concerned. I did add, um, that wasn't in there the last time. I added Town Hall Lot, actually this one here. And yes, I pulled my truck in forward tonight. I did not back in.
Sure.
Because, uh, Steve informed me, but there have been occasions as you get farther up closer to Main Street, the buildings across the street there are a little closer to that. And there have been cases where there has been damage caused to the building by people backing in and bumping that. So, um, I added Town Hall to that list to not allow backing into stalls there. That one again, uh, we, I'm recommending that we include that and we, we would sign those appropriately, those that we do not want backing into. And then we would, um, enforce that going forward unless the council wants us direct, to direct us to do differently.
Let's, and could we make sure that city staff, especially with city-marked vehicles, are not backing into stalls that they're not supposed to back into?
As, as I've mentioned in here, we will make sure that city employees also.
Okay.
Follow that, that rule. Um, the last one was, it was a requested, the request stated to change the time of enforcement from eight to six, back to nine to five. Well, it never was, actually nine to five, it was eight to five. We changed it to eight to seven and then we brought it back to eight to six. Uh, we feel that, that that was acceptable at the time when we reviewed it back in September and, and so we're not recommending that change. So with that, uh, we, we hope, there, there's a number of things in there here. There's probably still some more of this ordinance, as I stated, goes clear back to 1960 or before. And, um, we think we've caught those items that are, are critical and we think we've cleaned it up, but, um, there may still be some other items. Uh, it's our recommendation that we move forward this, at this time unless there's something that we see that is still critical that we're missing. And if it's something that's in here tonight and is, is more minor, we might can change it tonight. Otherwise, we would hold off and, and bring this back to introduce it at a future meeting.
Thank you, Cleve. And I want to thank you for, um, documenting the public's comments on this and answering their questions. Um, that, that helps have a thorough discussion and really appreciate you acknowledging their, their comments. And are there any members of the council that have any questions?
I do have a question.
Councilmember Wilkins?
Okay, so we'll have a question for after public comment, but for right now. Um, so say somebody is at Cosmic and they're gonna stay a little bit longer. They're gonna be down at Liar's Bench and they're gonna be drinking a little bit longer and they need to sober up or whatever. So we're only enforcing until six. So like what happens? They just, it says no barking until after whatever. Like, they just do it? Or like who, is it up to the police department to come and tag them or?
Yes. After the six o'clock hour, so actually after the nine o'clock hour, uh, that would be up to our police department to enforce that.
So it's up to, so between six and nine, it's kind of like a eh, go ahead?
Well, yeah, because it's, it's free parking anywhere in the city.
So then after nine, it's all on them? They, or Tagga's gonna have to go call out the sergeants to?
Correct. But, but I, I think that they would, they will use their discretion in that. If they observe that there's problems, if it seems like it's not a problem and it's something that, you know, is okay, I would think and hope.
So if they're cool, just like at Cosmic, whatever, and then it's 10:30, then they're fine?
Well, Cleve said that they can, Cosmic can apply for a permit.
Yeah, but hope that permit, I mean.
It, currently it reads nine o'clock. Um, and so that would be up to the police department. I don't think they're gonna, you know, again, the goal of that was to, uh, cut down on the vandalism and problems that we witnessed there. Um, I think that you're gonna see that our chief's gonna look at that and he's.
So if somebody goes to Cascada and then they wanna go, oh, I found a nice state and we're gonna go for a half hour drive and then they're parked over, well, Cascada did not know to apply for, or, or Cosmic for a permit.
Or Cosmic, okay.
Yes. They didn't know, oh, well.
To me, the intent of this, this ordinance is to give our police department tools.
I just don't want to scare people off.
If they're habitual offenders, you know, if habitual offenders or, or challenges.
Yeah.
So people should not be scared.
If I remember, we were, we were having a lot of trouble with, with drug, um, and, and also homeless, um, camping out down there, but it was mostly the drug, um, I think, deals and whatever. Um, and the, the officers couldn't see down there, all, you know. And then also another thing, the kids were, they were, that, sitting on the backs of their cars and kind of partying really, if I remember, if that was.
Those kids do.
As kids do.
Those kids were having fun.
I remember that.
All right, we have to stop that.
It was his, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I have just one question for Cleve. Um, do you have listed in this ordinance the actual lots that, that we're going to enforce not allowing backing into stalls?
Yes, it's the very last section, 95, 954, backing into stalls. And it lists, it lists the Fox Lot, Small Center Street Lot, Town Hall Lot, Center Street Parking Structure, and the city, Old City Hall Lot.
Thank you. That's, that's, well, I have a lot of other questions.
You bet. Councilmember Clarici?
I sort of understand what Councilmember Wilkins is talking about here. And I have a, I mean, I have confidence that the PD can, can navigate the, the difficult waters of folks that are at Cosmic and enjoying music or enjoying just sitting on their cars and not really doing anything. And the ones that aren't. And on the other hand, and, you know, I don't want this to become a five paragraph number five. I'm just wondering if there isn't some way to maybe bring some additional language in that sort of, just sort of clarifies what the city's intentions are, um, so that it, it, it's a bit more clear, I guess, to me. Cause I could sort of see that. I mean, well, you're at till nine. I mean, nothing finishes at Cosmic at nine on a weekend especially. So I don't think anybody would be, you know. So, so then the PD has to go down. I don't know. Maybe we could ask how the vision of PD would implement this. How kind of like, you know, Officer Smith comes down and there's something going on.
But John, they, like, the people that are hanging out there in the parking lot were not at Cosmic.
Well, yeah, but they don't wear signs. I mean, so they don't, you don't know.
I mean, we're, you know, they're custo.
Why don't we give Chief Ortega another chance to weigh in on this discussion? Hi, Chief.
Thank you very much, uh, Mayor and Council. So a couple of things would come up. First of all, we would, uh, hope that the city puts proper signage in the lot that notes the time and whatnot. And then to echo what one of you said, yes, it would be our officer's discretion. We're not gonna have, uh, the officers are not gonna go down there every single night with their ticket books because they want to write a bunch of parking tickets. That's not the intent. But if we get calls for service, if we see activity that is creating a problem for the surrounding businesses as well as the residents and others trying to enjoy the area, yes, then we will enforce and take appropriate actions such as people out there drinking alcohol, open containers, smoking marijuana, dealing drugs. Any of those issues will be dealt with. Um, but, you know, there's never anything black and white in our business generally. And this is one of those areas that discretion is gonna be the better part of the day.
And without that signage, you don't have tools in your toolbox to enforce those kinds of activities to that degree.
That's correct. The signage needs to be very clear. So.
Great. That's very helpful. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right. With that, I'd like to open up the, this discussion to members of the public who'd like to weigh in on this item. Come on down. State your name for the record, Good evening, Sue.
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, City Council. Sue Rodman, uh, Plasterville resident and, um, drafted into the parking committee. So I do still have a few comments for the ordinance revision. On page 7938, Restricted Parking, current wording says Clay Street, no parking on the west side at the Highway 50 over crossing. My suggestion is to change this to no parking from Main Street through the Highway 50 over crossing on both sides of the street. The reason is Clay Street is too narrow as it is and allowing parking on the east side at the Highway 50 over crossing creates a single lane width street at that over crossing and it's unsafe because it limits visi, visibility in both travel directions, creating hazards for vehicles, for bicycles, and for pedestrians, especially since Clay Street crosses the old Eldorado Trail just a few feet from that Highway 50 over crossing. So the people coming under the over crossing do not see bicycles or people on the trail. And people on the trail or on a bicycle don't see the traffic coming through there. Page 12, Section 938, Restricted Parking, Ray Lawyer Drive, it says on the south side from a point 1750 feet east of the access road into the Kasumnas River College Campus. Casumus River College campus to Fair Lane. I think this is out of date, the college behind Rayleigh's moved out to the Eldorado Center a number of years ago.
She found us again.
However, limited parking in this stretch of Ray Lower Drive is still a good idea, we just need to find a new label for the access road. Then on page fifteen, section nine, three, ten, the blue curb, parking spaces, section D, off-street on privately financed facility, facilities, the police department is authorized to enforce this provision? Hooray. I cannot tell you how many times I took my wheelchair-bound mother to Rayleigh's only to find that there was not a single blue parking space, although they were occupied by people without any sign of a handicap sticker. Okay, page two. Beginning on page twenty-three, nine, four, six, general and hourly parking restrictions in municipal lots. Number one, A, under one, it says unless specified below, vehicles may be parked in a municipal parking period for a period not to exceed two hours or in excess of that, provided payment has been made for said excess time. This wording seems really convoluted to me, and I have a suggestion to change it to say unless otherwise specified below, vehicles may be parked in a municipal parking lot without charge for a period not to exceed two hours, and pay must, must be made for time in excess of the two free hours. Now, page twenty-four, special parking limitations municipal lot, the Ivy House Lot again. Um, the Ivy House is still singled out for those special restrictions, and it puts a very short prescribed ending time for any music events upstairs at the Cosmic Cafe. Music usually starts at eight PM. A nine PM restriction shortchanges the music. Why not eleven PM? Eleven PM would provide adequate time for music events, still restrict use after that so that the area avoids becoming a drug dealing or loitering area. People coming and going for music events also tend to discourage the loitering and other illicit activity in the Ivy House Lot. And speaking from experience, when you go to a music event and you have to go in and get a special sticker to put on your dashboard and then go back down the stairs and across the street and put it on your dashboard and come back in, it's a pain. And I think that if you just change it to eleven PM, it would allow more people to go to the music. If you're, have sciatica like I had for a while, it makes it very difficult to go up the stairs, back down the stairs, back up the stairs. So, okay, then backing into stalls, I thought that at the last, uh, meeting we had, that that small Center Street Lot, we're talking about the one that's across the street from Town Hall, right? That little one? I thought there was agreement that for that lot, safety required backing into those stalls, and I remember, or seem to remember, our police chief making that observation as well. So, did this just get overlooked, or is that part of the problem with the fence being kicked off? So, that's it.
Thank you, Sue, appreciate it. You're always very thorough, we appreciate your, your work on these matters. Anyone else who didn't like weigh in on parking? All right, we'll bring this back to the council.
Could I follow through on what Sue just said?
Sure.
And ask a question, Cleve? Um, I remember, I remember that being said too, that the, the workers were doing it because it, they don't have enough room to, when they wanna leave, to, you know, to, if they, if they don't back in, then they have to, and there's not, there's just not enough room to do it. So how are we gonna remedy that?
Well, it, it is more difficult, it's not impossible. Um, so it's, 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 it's one or the other, you say, do you wanna protect the fence? Or do you want to, you know?
Well, couldn't we put some poles or something up that they'd hit the poles and not the fence?
Yeah. When they stick out, that's the problem.
Yeah.
It's just too small.
It's just, it's just very narrow, that's, that's what's difficult about that parking.
Don't they just beep beep and then?
We could put holes in the fence so that they're.
All right, well, shall we address some of her, her questions? The Clay Street, um, Clay Street, I'd like to weigh in on, on the Clay Street issues. It, it would seem that we might wanna look at that in its, in a holistic, um, manner when we do the Clay Street alignment. I mean, it, it would make sense to address it at that point, not to do a stopgap measure right now.
Right now.
Does that, does that make sense to the council?
Right. The other thing too, and we were talking about this over here, and that is, well, I was talking, Councilmember Wilkins was listening to me. Do you wanna have a general rule about the Ivy House parking lot when the concerts are actually discreet events, and there's far more nights when no one is over there doing anything?
Right.
After eight o'clock at night?
Like, nobody's over there right now.
Like, right now? We should all go over there. Anyway, um, so then, that's kind of a quandary, because you wanna make the entertainment experience nice, and you don't wanna put any barriers up necessarily, but on the other hand, you don't wanna make a general rule that applies to every day of the week, because then, you know, you'll have people out there at eleven o'clock or ten forty-five and doing something not, that we don't want them to be doing. So, I agree, I think maybe we, this is, I don't wanna hang this up on the, on the Clay Street, uh, parking lot, or the Ivy House parking lot. But it is kind of an interesting conundrum to have to kind of noodle through.
Let me, let me just mention on the comment about going in and getting a, a permit and then coming back, but my idea is that the, the business would get a permit and say, hey, we're having a concert going till eleven on Friday night, get that approved by the police department, and then that parking would be allowed on that Friday night, so it doesn't mean that they would-
So every week, they have to go apply for a permit?
The business owner.
The business owner.
Just the business owner.
Oh, yeah.
For everyone.
So every Friday? So, on the second and on the ninth?
Well, no, 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 no. If they, if they know that they're gonna have a concert for the next, you know, six weeks, every, every Friday night, they can go apply for that, the police department, and get that permit approved for six weeks. So it's not like they have to come in every week and do it. We can do it that way.
Okay, so be for Fridays, and if they say, oh, we're gonna have open, oh, we have enough people on Saturdays, we're gonna have a totally booming open mic. Oh, wait, we didn't get our permit? I mean, I don't mean to be a pain, but.
Sure. Yeah, i- it's, it's a tough one, I understand both sides of it, and it's up to, you know, you, council, if, if you wanna change it to eleven, I don't see that being a huge deal, I'm looking at the police chief, but, um, he, of course, he wasn't here when we had the problem before, so.
Exactly.
From my perspective, with the Clay Street alignment, once again, that issue will be addressed. That lower platform won't be-
That's separate, yeah.
So it might make sense to, you know, enact the ordinance as we see it tonight, and then address that, um, at that time, when that is no longer a problem.
Because they're gonna change that whole configuration.
So, so Fox and the garage and Main Street, everything is how it is, and then?
Just for now.
We address the, the Ivy Lot as we go forward with the-
In its entirety, yes, exactly, that, that might be a solution, so. Do I have any further comments, or?
No, I, I just really wanna reiterate again, I, I am not in favor of opening that thing up, because I remember all the problems we had with that lot, it was really pretty bad. And I, you know, people are people, and they're gonna go where they can hide, and they did.
And they do.
Vice Mayor Cunha?
Oh, my goodness. General comments on this whole thing? I have a question for the city manager slash city attorney. If we were to change any of the wording in the actual body of the ordinance, is the wording that Sue had suggested for the description of, uh, paid parking, would we have to bring it back? Would we have to start over?
No, not as long as it's something that is part of the agenda item tonight.
Oh, good.
And it's referenced in there.
Okay.
In addition, I would recommend we, the, the one that refers to-
Oh, and the Casumus River College.
That's a good idea.
That was in there a couple of places, and I, I thought I got them all out, but that, that actually can be completely removed, that, that section does not need to be in there.
Oh, awesome. So then, again, I have had a couple of items that I failed to bring up at the last meeting and that are not in here, and the city attorney has already ruled that, um, those changes are not gonna be eligible this evening, and I'm fine with that, I am gonna discuss them briefly. Um, regarding the, um, Ivy House parking lot, um, my take on it is, Chief, how many cars did we tow there in the last year that were there after nine o'clock because there was a band playing at Cosmic? Our parking tickets, did we write?
I don't have that data with me.
Oh, but it's-
I haven't heard, uh, that we've towed any cars or written any tickets, but I do know that there have been calls for service. Again, I don't have the data, I wasn't prepared for that tonight. I can get that for you.
Okay, I, I think, uh, nine o'clock, I don't know that Cosmic was doing concerts when this was an issue. It was a, I mean, it was a big issue, and it, it ultimately also led to the restrictions of the use of the bell tower, because it was getting destroyed by kids, local and not local, hanging on, hanging on and climbing on it, parking. So I remember both of those issues very clearly. Doesn't mean that this still needs to be nine o'clock, I'd be happy with ten or eleven, but, um, the existing activities that take place along that creek right now are not exactly very wholesome. I mean, let's be honest, there's a, there's drug traffic there every day, um, there's drug use there every day. So, I mean, we're so worried about these events and putting a specific time on it, and we've already got issues there that are, um, social issues that are very difficult to control. So, uh, perhaps the future bridge project can address, um, a beautifully new restored lot and also the concerns about the parking under the, under crossing on Clay Street. But I understand, I agree with Sue, that it needs to be looked at, uh, from, from a couple of safety standpoints. If you'll bear with me, um, just to share with you, uh, one of the items that I missed bringing it in here, um, was to ask for four-hour parking on the west side of Arizona Way at Duffy Park. Um, the chief and his staff have been great this past six or eight months in, uh, really discouraging that being used as a car storage lot from the apartment building. Um, and, I mean, some of these cars were just almost overgrown with weeds, and his, his officers have been trying to, trying to enforce that without an ordinance. Unfortunately, Cleve and I did not make the proper connection, it's not included this evening, but it still needs to happen. It's really affecting families' abilities to go in there and park and use, and use the park. So, that was one I missed. Uh, reviewing, kinda as Sue Rodman did, going through all the no parking zones, I discovered that, um, there were four temporary cul-de-sacs as a part of the Park View subdivision, two of which are included in our list as no parking, uh, cul-de-sacs, two of which are not, and one of them is Brendan Way and the other one is Sean. Both of those need to have no parking so that, um, there can be emergency access into the acreage beyond those streets. Again, I overlooked it, the wording that's in there on the other two streets, uh, which is Jeffrey and Barrett, is perfect, no parking on, on the turnaround. We have some no parking signs out there at the end of Brendan, but as, since it's not gonna be codified, we technically couldn't write a ticket, but, um, I also had, um, a request to Cleve to, um, once again, approach the county for use of the courthouse parking spaces for weekend parking. Because everything along the creek, people aren't sure by the way it's signed and worded and the directions of the arrows, it's, it's vacant.
Right.
Um, there's a tremendous change now that the district attorney's office is gone. There is a lot of cars that are not parking, I mean, obviously, I don't know how they fit in that space, it's, it was amazing. So, um, that is a, just something else that I'd like to bring forward when the time is right. Regarding this particular ordinance this evening, two, one or two things I'd like to consider is, um, removal of the green zone and converting it to a no parking zone, in front of what I call the old phone company building, or the DA's Annex Building. There's two green zones there right now, and the green zones were used almost exclusively by, uh, law enforcement officers. And I, you know, it was like, do you dare park there, will they give you a ticket? It was, it was always filled with highway patrol cars, um, they're gone now. The problem we have is, especially with the green zone closest to the intersection, is that with the westbound traffic on Main Street, it really, in that particular parking place, now is an opportunity to make that a red zone and allow there to be additional travel space there for right turn movements. From west, again, there's still a green zone, there's a, there's two green zones, I, I did a drive on it this afternoon to verify my locations, there's driveways there, so that's, have very little impact to our parking inventory, but I think it would be a huge improvement to the traffic flow on westbound Main Street. And we do have the opportunity to remove that this evening, um, in, in this particular document. So that was the one, um, I would just say that I do support the city manager's ability to issue loading zone permits. I mean, it's allowed Cleve to have the authority to lower the enforcement, I think we're allowed to do that as a city, if he has a business owner that qualifies in his mind as needing a loading zone placard. Um, I, I'm confident that that's a good win-win for the city as well as the merchant I had a question regarding the lease spaces on weekends. Did we figure that out, Cleve? If I'm paying for a parking place, uh, and my employee needs to park in their spot on Sunday, are they gonna still have it, or is it gonna be fair game because there's no enforcement on Sundays?
Yeah, what, what we would do is, it, it would be fair game, we would state that, uh, leased parking and, uh, all permit, all parking is only enforced Monday through Saturday, so, um, that person could park where they normally park on the third floor of the garage, they could then park on the first floor of the garage if they really want to, but they can park anywhere they can find a space.
Okay, so that's kind of the trade-off, the, the argument, who am I paying for? Well, now you can park anywhere you want though on Sundays. Freedom on Sunday. So thank you for clarifying that, Cleve. And so that would be the only thing, I guess, this evening that I would, would, with those two things, removing the green zone right down here at the old DA's Building and allowing Cleve the opportunity to, uh, hand out those loading zone permits as he sees fit.
And then bring those items back at a later date?
I think we could do that this evening, since there were those two items.
The other items I'm talking about, Mark.
Yeah, the other items, yeah, bring back, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I will work with Cleve to bring back those other streets and, and especially Arizona Way, because that really needs to happen before summer.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Porelli.
So, when we live in the neighborhoods, we observe things. So I've had a problem, um, I live on Manor Drive, and as you go up this horrible hill that was created when the whole street was tunnel, up to Tunnel Street, um, for some reason, there's a lady, and I think she works over at the, um, county, um, offices up there on, off of Tunnel, and I, she insists on parking. As you go up to approach Tunnel Street, she parks there, and there's no signs that say not to, the, the curb across the street is painted red. It's a horrible, horrible turn for people coming, if they're coming off Tunnel Street onto Manor Drive, it's blind, you cannot see coming down that little hill. And so this lady is parking as you approach Tunnel Street, and, um, in order to, for, like me, to approach Tunnel Street, I have to go around her. So if anybody's coming off Tunnel down onto Manor, they're gonna hit me head-on. And I really wish that we could put a sign up there, I, I'm not sure, I've heard, um, yea and nay on painting curbs red, and I don't care if it's red, I just would like no parking from here to the corner or something like that, but it's really dangerous, and I don't know why she insists on parking there.
My recommendation is we can take a look at that and add it to those future items, we wouldn't be able to add it in here tonight, but we can, we can take a look at it.
For five dollars, you can add it.
Thank you. Councilmember Clary G.
I'm, I'm fine.
Councilmember Wilkins?
I do have a question. This, I, I don't know a lot about, Rebecca's not here and I'm not a Rebecca, so, um, so we were talking about greens, and I know like twenty-minute parking, twelve-minute parking, and then we have yellow, and then we have red, is no parking, and then we have white. And so, in Ms. Taylor's, um, letter, she was talking about merchants being able to park in like the commercial loading zones, and so I did a little bit of research, but I could have been, I don't know. But, um, isn't it like, do we get to, so I know the green, we are like, as Placerville, we're allowed to say, oh, yeah, that's twelve, or that's twenty, or whatever, but, um, can, do they have to have a special sticker? We can't just say, oh, it's commercial loading zone, it's gonna be yellow, but you're not a commercial vehicle, like, for the state, like, so we can't just say, oh, you're a merchant, no, that's fine. I mean, I don't know, maybe this is for, um, Mr. Driscoll?
Yeah, maybe, I, I think we talked a little bit about this last time, that, that we can actually issue a special permit for them, even though it's not a commercial zone.
But they'll have to have it on their car.
That's correct.
Okay, so each individual vehicle?
That's what I was suggesting, for sure.
So somebody can't have their Honda Civic with, oh, I'm just here, and then?
Yeah, 'cause that's why I mentioned that the problem with saying they can just do it is, we don't know what their vehicles are. I mean, I know that our-
Does that go through us?
I'm looking at my enforcement officer back here, he, he knows a lot of them, and gets to know them, but they change cars. Who knows? So, I think that, you know, we would want to talk to them. If somebody has an issue with that and needs to use that, we want to accommodate them.
So, we would have to let them, yes.
They would need to come in and talk to us, and we would figure out how we can accommodate.
I'm trying to do this for the general because I know they're probably out there listening a little bit right now.
Yeah.
But we can handle that administratively and accommodate the merchant's needs to load and unload in front of their stores, which does make sense.
Okay.
All right. Great. Thank you. All right. With that, does anyone like to bring a motion forward on this item tonight?
I'll go ahead and move staff's recommendations with the inclusion of removal of the green zone and converting it to a red zone in front of the DA's annex and allowing the city manager to issue loading zone permits to merchants as he sees fit.
Wait, what's that?
That was what you were, that was what I was discussing earlier.
So, you're talking about with the green?
And I'll second it.
Okay. All right. We have a motion in a second.
And also...
And the noted changes as recommended by, or out as...
For example, the one on Ray Lawyer Drive that refers to the entrance to the Consumas River College, we'll remove that section.
Yep. So moved.
I have a quick question. I'm so sorry. I'm totally holding up the meeting.
Do we want to amend the wording as Sue outlined? That kind of, it does make a little bit more sense to say that the first two hours are free and then the individual purchases the additional time as they needed. That seemed like a nice...
So, you're amending your motion?
Yes, that'll be my motion.
I would just prefer to look hard at that language. I mean, I had a couple of questions about it as she was reading without looking at it. I'm not saying it's bad. I just, I'd like to look at it and make sure that it fits. I mean, if you want to allow me the discretion to...
That was my question.
And just word it using her language and making sure it works right.
What it'll be, it'll be a basically a non-substance amendment that you'll be able to see when it comes back for the second reading. So, it'll be more like a clerical correction, if you will. And that way, I can make sure too that it is worded so that it is an enforcement tool and not just something that is more descriptive. But you cannot do this type of thing.
Great. Okay.
And so, that would be my motion to have that appear in the second reading.
And my second stands for whatever.
For Mark's amended motion. Any further discussion?
No, it's just a tiny little question.
Yes, Councilmember Wilkins?
Okay. So, the process for getting the 20-minute or the green permit is what? And the cost approximately, I mean, is it $4,000 or is it 30 bucks?
For getting what? Excuse me.
The loading zone.
For the yellow zones?
We won't, we won't charge for those. Yeah, it'll just be a matter of them coming into the fourth floor and explaining what their need is and how it's going to work. And, you know, as long as it's, like I say, I'm stopping to unload for, you know, for 10 minutes. I'm going to unload for 20 minutes and unload my car, and then I'll be gone.
And then...
Yeah. And it'll probably be just a paper permit that we give them. We'll have to talk to them about, you know, how often it is. And there's some details we'll need to work out with it. But it's not something that I plan on charging for. It'll just be...
Okay. Great. Thank you for that clarification. All right. With that, we have a motion, a second on the floor. All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? No? All right. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. And with that, we have our auditor's report this evening. Thank you so much, Ken, for coming up from Southern California and being with us tonight. Item 12.1 is to acknowledge and file the annual financial report and independent auditor's report for fiscal year 2015, 2016. And Mr. Warren, would you like to introduce this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Before we begin, I would like to apologize to the council that this report is coming to you so late. Due to some unforeseen workload impacts in the finance department, the annual audit report, annual financial report was issued late. So, and we're working feverishly to complete the 16, 17. As a matter of fact, the auditors have been in the office the last week, and they've exited the field. And we're working feverishly to finalize the 16, 17 annual report. So, with that, Ken Poon from Poon Group is here tonight to present the audit report. He's your CPA and partner with Poon Group. So, with that, Ken.
Thank you, Dave.
Good evening, Ken. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, member of the city council. Again, my name is Ken Poon. I'm the engagement partner of the audit of the city of Placerville for the year-end June 30, 2016. And as Dave said, you'll probably see me in another two months to present the 2016 and 17 here. But why don't we just let catch up on this 2016 here? So, here we go. So, what we are going through today is kind of give you the scope of the audit, kind of do my same old, same old discussion on audit responsibility because it's important for you to kind of get, remind you what your responsibility as a city council and management and our responsibility as the auditor. The approach to the audit, and then also kind of go through the, a brief overview of the financial statement, giving you the numbers, kind of pull out some of the financial indicator and the pension information. And last but not least is to give you my other results. So, the scope of work actually divided into two parts. The first part is the financial statement audit. Basically, is looking at the books and records, making sure that the financials are fairly present in all material respect in accordance with generally accepted accounting standard. The other part, because the city has expended more than $750,000 of federal expenditure. So, that's why there's another piece. It's the compliance audit, making sure that you comply with all the laws and regulations and using the money in the right way in those program. Audit responsibilities. First part, management responsibility. You are fully responsible for these financial statements. By presenting these financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principle, as you know, the city is a state local government, so the GASP Government Accounting Standboard is the standard-setting bodies for the city. So, in the last, I've been talking to Dave, the last two decades, we've been dealing with 15 new GASP pronouncements and more to come. So, we are diligently implementing all the required accounting principle to the, to these financial statements and make it more transparent to the financial statement and make it more useful. Adopt sound accounting policy. The most important part as management is to establish and maintain proper internal control over financial reporting. So, to make sure that these financial is free of material misstatement, whether due from fraud or errors. Provide evidence supporting to the amount and the disclosure to the financial statement. And last but not least is you do need to have programs to prevent and detect fraud. As the auditors, we actually follow, must follow the auditing standard in conducting these financial statement audit and compliance audit. So, there are two standards. One is the AICPA generally accepted auditing standard, and the second piece is the government auditing standard. Which actually, it's more stringent because we are required to look at the internal control and have an internal control report to you to talk about if we identify something in internal control that we classify as material weaknesses or significant deficiency. So, those will be important. Communicate with those charged with governance. That's why I'm here today. So, they're creating a two-way communications with you. Assess audit risk of internal control over financial reporting and compliance. So, we are no longer allowed to tick and tie the numbers tracing to the, tracing to the, to the accounting record. We are required to assess risk. The more, the higher the risk, the more that we need to test to make sure that we are comfortable with it. Determine the fairness presentation of the financial statement. And last but not least is to render our audit opinions. The approach to, like, in order for us to fulfill our responsibility, we are required to, like, I break it down into four phases. First phase is the detail planning phases. Detail planning phase is looking at the new GASP pronouncement, take a look at the unique transactions of the city during the year, and then come up with a good audit work plan. Second phase is to address the internal control issue. We are coming here to assess risk, looking at the accounting methodology that being used by the city, do the risk assessment, and identify the areas that we need to look at when we come to the third phase, validation of account balance. So, we validate all the account balance, material account balance by looking at your internal record, looking at the account reconciliation, the analysis provided by Dave, confirming with third parties, and making sure that these financial, like, all the numbers are agreeing with the supporting document. And last but not least, we don't have the independence issue because they've prepared the financial statement. So, we are able to look at the financial statement, tie it up to what we audited, and issue our audit opinion. So, a brief overview of the financial report. The report, actually, we just have the financial sections here. So, starting off with our independent auditor's report, this is really our opinion on these financial statements. Even when you see it's the MDNA, the Management Discussion and Analysis, is an un-audited document, but it's very important because it summarizes really at the high level of what's going, what's going on during the year. So, you can compare current year and the previous year financials and kind of tell the story of what's going on. So, give you the financial highlight, give you the capital asset information, also give you the long-term debt information. The basic financial statement is what we audited. So, basically, one, the government-wide financial statement is the city as a whole at the consolidated level, which break it down by the governmental activities and the business-type activities. The fund financial statement is what you use internally, the day-to-day fund information that you have. And also, it's really what you budgeted for. So, you can tie these numbers to your budget and make sure that you are, making sure that those numbers are in line with your budget. The notes to the basic financial statement is actually give you more details to the, to the numbers that is presented. The required supplementary information is, is another un-audited information, but also give you a lot of detailed information. It's required under GASP 34. You do also see the budgetary comparison schedule for the general fund. And then also, the information about the pension plan. How's that, what is the unfunded pension liability? What is the funding ratio on both of your miscellaneous plan and your safety plan? And then also, a schedule of funding progress on your other post-employment benefit. Last but not least, in these financial statements is the supplementary information. Anything, it's what we call non-major other governmental fund, we have the detail. Those are actually present in the supplementary information. Okay? So, let's take a look at the numbers. Government-wide financial statement is the consolidated level, break it down by governmental activities and the business-type activities. So, total, total asset for both activities added together, it's about like $122 million. Liability, $76.2 million. Those liabilities also include the unfunded pension liabilities, which record on these financial statements. And I'll give you more detail on how much is that actually put into the $76 million, resulting in a net position of $46.7 million, of which $50 million is called the, is carved out as an investment in capital asset. Capital asset is really a non-liquid asset, so GASP really want to carve that out separately, present it in the net position, restricted. It's really restricted by third party. $4.7 million at the end of June 30, 2016, and resulting a deficit of $8.9 million. Don't be surprised, this deficit is really caused by the reporting of the unfunded pension liabilities. So, when I'm going into the numbers, and you'll see why you have a deficit of $8.9 million. You will also see the deferred inflows and deferred outflow resource. Those are actually actuarial items. Because of implementing pension standard, some of the things that are not being used to recognize as the pension expense during the year, it is recorded in these deferred inflows and deferred outflows items. Those, for example, one thing is the pension contribution made after the measurement date. So, those, because it's made during the year, but the, because of the actuarial valuation has not been done as of June 30, 2016, it was valued as of June 30, 14, and rolled over to 15. So, that's why the contribution is not being used to net against the pension liabilities. So, those are the items that you, you will see in the deferred inflows or deferred outflows of resources. Okay? So, let's take a look at what the current year operations. Total expenses, $18.9 million, so close to $19 million in expenses for both governmental activities and business-type activities. Program revenues, those actually you can charge the user for a fee, or you can actually obtain operating grants or capital grants to support the activities, $13.4 million, resulting in net cost of service about like $5.5 million. Total general revenue, $8.1 million. Others, general revenue, which include some miscellaneous revenue, investment revenues of about like $477,000, resulting in a net increase in your net position of 3.1 combining total. Even break it down between governmental funds and the enterprise fund, $3 million for all the governmental fund service. And then also, the business type is almost breaking even, $100,000 increase.
Can I make a comment real quick? The 3.03 million increase in governmental activities, that represents a 10.5% increase year-over-year, and that was due to a 51.78% increase in program revenues. If you drill down to that, that's primarily because of grants for transportation projects that we capitalize. And then the other thing was 11.57% increase in general revenues and transfers. The primary driver in that is a 10.8% increase in sales tax. The business-type activities was less than we would hope for, but due to the drought and conservation, your water, you know, your business-type activities is primarily your water and sewer funds. And so, because of conservation, those numbers came in a little tighter than we would like to see. But that's the nature of the beast.
True. Thank you, Dave. So, let's take a look at the general fund. General fund is the city main operating fund. So, we also want to present to you how's your general fund look like. Total asset, $2.9 million. Dave, do you mind if you can go to the next two slides, page 14? So, total liability, $754,000, resulting in the fund balance of $2.1 million. And you can see, you have a $1.7 million in assigned fund balance, which is actually pretty good for the city. You have a pretty big, what I call the reserve fund, rainy days fund. The next page is, take a look at the operating operations. So, during the year, $8.1 million in revenue. That's include all the property tax, sales tax that you earn during the year. And then also, the expenditure is about, coming close to $8.1 million. Kind of breaking even, $80,000. But also, you receive a transfer from other funds of about like $129,000. So, bring up the fund balance by $208,000.
Quick comment on that. The $208,000 surplus was primarily due to a 13.59% growth in sales tax that year.
Could you bring your microphone closer to you, Dave? Thank you. Can you say that again? We couldn't hear you with the static. Thank you.
The $208,000 surplus that you see there was primarily due to a 13.59% growth in sales tax that year.
That's important to highlight. Thank you.
So, the next slide is actually going into the, some financial indicator that we would like to share with you because I personally like to do racial analysis so that kind of give you some ideas what the city's financial situations are. So, the first one is to actually take a look at the governmental activities, the net cost of service compared to tax revenue. Because all the cost of service that's provided by the city is really, should be subsidized by the tax revenue. So, when you see the governmental activities, the net cost of service for the year-end June 30, 2016, $4.6 million, compared to tax revenue, $7.2 million. That's mean that you have a ratio of 63.59%. What does that mean? It's every dollar that, like, every cost that you, every dollar that you produce, every tax dollars that you generate, it only costs like, only costs the city about like 63 cents to operate. So, basically, it's, it's a really good ratios. You want to keep that, this number is below 100% so that this is a really, really good financial position for the year. The other ratio that I'm looking at is the unassigned fund balance to the annual expenditure. This is what I call the rainy days fund. When times are tight, you basically may need some reserve rainy days money. So, as you can tell, I use the unassigned fund balance compared to the annual expenditure. GFOA, the Government Financial Officer Association, their best practice is talking about two months of expenditures, which is really equal to 16.67%. For this year, you have a 21.73%, so which is above what is needed. So, it's pretty good. The next item is the hot topics. In the whole entire government industry, we've been talking about unfunded pension liabilities. So, starting 2015, it was the first year, 2016, second year, reporting the unfunded pension liabilities on the face of the financial statement. So, out of the $72 million, when I talked earlier about the liabilities, you can see... So, out of the $72 million, when I talked earlier about the liabilities, you can see about like $13 million is relating to the unfunded pension liabilities. These numbers are based on the 7.5% discount rate when they evaluate the, the pension liabilities. So, as you can tell, the CalPERS already talked about dropping the discount rate from 7.5 to 7% in the next three years, starting 2018, 19, and 20. So we will, we, we are going to expect these numbers going to increase in the, in the, in the next couple of years. So we'll stay tuned, and I'm sure the city have plans to deal with pension issues.
Real quick comment, just so the council knows, the previous year, the unfunded liability was 11.7%. So the increase is a little over $2 million, or 17.84% year-over-year. And we're seeing that trend continue in the next five to seven years. Cleveland and I talked about bringing a report to the council, probably the second meeting in February, to kind of drill down on that, to give you more information as to why that, that's happening.
And Dave, while we're on this, this topic, how does this figure compare to other similar cities?
Ken, you made a comment earlier today about that, what you're seeing.
Well, it's all based on the funded ratio. You have like two plans. One is the miscellaneous plan, based on what we see, the, the actuarial study, you are a little bit shy on the average. Usually, what I see is between 72 to 75%, but your miscellaneous plan is about like 68% funded. However, your safety plan, it's about like, it's within range.
Okay.
So, you're welcome.
Thank you.
So the next item is not on the face of the financial statement yet, completely on the face of the financial statement yet. So, is the other post-employment benefit, the retiree post-employment health, healthcare plan. So, I know the city do not have a irrevocable trust to set aside money on this plan, so basically, there's no asset in your last actuarial study being set aside. So, the last actuarial study that was being done was July 1 of 2015. As of that point, the total accrued liabilities was close to $3 million. So, that's mean in the next year, when 2008, like, for 2018 audit, you will see the, the OPEB is also following the pension standard, requires to book the unfunded OPEB liabilities on the face of the financial statement.
Quick comment on that. As the council knows, we're currently doing what we call pay-as-you-go, meaning that we're following our retiree medical plan, and we're paying the premiums for today's retirees. However, we're not setting anything aside for future increases in health costs, and that's why this number is growing. Not as fast as pension, but it is growing. And we have spoken with the employee units about this in negotiations over the past couple of years, and it's something that we want to continue having conversations with labor about, because it, it needs to be addressed in the future.
Sure. Okay. Okay. On this unfunded, kind of going slide back, but on the unfunded pension liability, so right now, it's like 13, $13 million, 10 plus 3, like, almost 14.
Right.
Now, is this just the part that exists because Purge took a giant dump, and they haven't been able to figure out how to get back from that? Or is this our entire pension liability that we would have, would, would there always be a number there, even if things were running well, if we were at the marks of Purge hadn't taken the giant dump? Could you clarify that? Or is this just that part?
The 13.8 million is your net unfunded liability. So if you take our plan, total assets, less total forecasted liabilities, or actuarially based liabilities.
Right, right.
That's what the net, it's a net negative 13.8 million. As of June 30 of 2016, I will caution the council that since that time, that number has grown.
Has grown, right.
And when we come back to you, as Ken mentioned, in a couple of months, we're going to tell you that it grew to 16.3 million.
So if we could dial this back to 2007, or 8, would this number have been zero?
Your side fund at that time, I don't have the exact number with me, I want to say it was between 4 and 5 million.
So there's always a number there.
There's, there's.
Even in the best of times, there's always a number there. This number is exacerbated because of what happened with Purge.
Right. And what we like to do is in February is bring a report back to kind of give you the history and where we see it going, and kind of bring some ideas to the council to consider possibly in the future, to help slow that growth down and possibly reverse that growth.
Okay. All right.
Because these number are always an estimate number.
Sure.
So it's based on the, the mortality rate of the employee, and then also based a lot, like, really heavily on the investment portfolio, how they perform. So those are the things that is always juggling at, at CalPERS. But last time, like, CalPERS actually did release a report saying that they, they did have a great year. So the numbers is first time out of the last three, four years, first time is about what they, what they should be, 7.5.
Everybody had a great year last year.
Yeah.
Everybody did. I, I have a totally blind, I, I do a market index fund investments, I had a great year. I'm tired of Purge telling us what kind of great years they have, and when they don't have a great year, all of a sudden, they're not talking to anybody. And in fact, I'll just let you know this, because we're going to do this, sometime in the single digits of March, we're having a League of California Cities for the division, the Sacramento, North Sacramento Valley Division's going to have their dinner up here.
That's right.
And we're having a guy, or gal, from Purge come and talk about this. I think, and I, I like the idea that maybe there's going to be some strategies about how to reverse these trends, and I have no doubt you folks are working your butts off trying to figure this out. I'm tired of having discussions where they just come and they kind of talk to you, and then they lay you all this really bad news on you, and then they kind of walk out the room, like the state of California doesn't have any responsibilities for any of this stuff. It's important to know that this number would exist. There's always a number here. It's worse because of what CalPERS did, and it's worse, and it's getting worse. In a normal, I guess in a normal circumstances, it would have just sort of fluctuated with markets and stuff, but it wouldn't have been as bad. But it's getting worse because they still can't get their act together down there. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Cleveland would like to weigh in on this.
I'm going to look at Dave and make sure I'm saying this right, but you recall, back in the early 2000s, probably 2002 approximately, many agencies, including us, were actually super-funded.
Oh, yeah.
That's when those, so you talked about that number always existed. Back then, that was a positive number, rather than a negative number when we were.
The holidays.
That's correct.
Those were the days.
Yeah, when they were masters of the universe.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, but I think, well, times have changed, and the cities have more financial responsibility now than, than they did then.
That's true. There's some new realities.
And it just, it boggles my mind. I, I agree with John, I, you know, it's like, where is this heading? Because we keep seeing cities declaring bankruptcy, and, you know, I read it all the time about, you know, difficulties trying to meet these pensions, and I just, I just can't see how this can go on.
Yeah.
Hi, thank you, Ken.
You're welcome.
Continue.
Ken, you can't solve all this.
Sorry about that.
We can't solve all of them, all of them, but we can certainly be able to help and suggest some idea, because I've been working with a lot of challenging city, distressed city, and working with the financial advisors, and coming, coming up with different plans on, like, kind of making sure that it's sustainable. The plan is sustainable, the city will be able to pay the actuarial determined contribution. Those are the most important part. Yeah. And be transparent, yeah.
That's right.
So the next couple of slides is the most important in my report, is the audit results. We finish up all the audit procedures, and we are able to obtain sufficient audit evidence to provide the city an unmodified opinion for all opinion units, which means that the financial statements are fairly present in all material respect. The significant accounting policy have been consistently applied, the estimates are reasonable, and the disclosure are properly reflected in the financial statement. And other results, we do not have any disagreement with management. No accounting issues, the accounting principles are consistently applied, no material weaknesses in internal control over financial reporting or compliance, but one significant deficiency noted because of the delay in issuing the financial report. No material irregularities discovered. We did not identify, identify any major fraud here. So which conclude my presentation tonight, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, thank you very much, Ken. That was a very clear report, and we, we certainly appreciate that.
Always.
Does the council have any additional questions for Mr. Poon?
No, we just appreciate your hard work and, and your assistance today, making sure that we're timely and we're in compliance.
Sure.
Patti?
Thank you.
I echo the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So with that, we'll invite members of the public that would like to speak on, speak on this item. All right, we'll close public comment, and once again, thank you very much, Ken.
Thank you so much.
We wish you safe travels back to Southern California. It looks like we'll be seeing you soon, so.
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Acknowledging file.
All right. We are on discussion item 12.2. Authorize the mayor to sign a letter from the city of Placerville to Governor Brown requesting reconsideration to include funding in the 2018-19 state budget, governors proposed for the construction of the El Dorado County new Placerville courthouse. Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item came up as a result of discussions with El Dorado County and their discussions with the state recently about the governor's preliminary budget that came out, and several courthouse projects that are on the critical needs list were included in that budget. However, the city of Placerville, El Dorado County courthouse was not included, the new courthouse. In our discussions with the county, we determined that, you know, why is that? We thought we were on that critical needs list. The court case has now been resolved, and as far as we know, there is nothing that should be holding back that courthouse, the Placerville, El Dorado County courthouse from moving forward. So in discussion with the county, we agreed that we would look at putting together a letter to send to the governor's office. Recent meetings that the CEO, county CEO, had down in Sacramento with the governor's office indicated that he is willing to get courthouses funded this year, even to the extent of possibly funding those with general fund money if necessary, as he recognized that that money was taken away from courts a few years, a couple of years ago, in order to help problems they had with the general fund. So with that, we, we thought we'd put this letter together to explain to the governor, we are, it is ready to go. There's been a number of things that have happened. As you know, at your last meeting, you approved the Western Placerville Interchange Project Phase 2, which is getting ready to go to construction right now. And, and therefore, that is another important piece that, that helps with the transportation for the new courthouse, as well as many other businesses on classical driving, et cetera, that, that is an important link. So you have the draft letter in your packet, and you can make changes to that if you like, if you see anything you'd like to, and otherwise, we'd recommend that you authorize the mayor to sign that letter and forward it to the governor, as well as copies to our legislators as is noted.
Thank you. Any council, any council comments? Questions?
I'd like to ask if we have been in contact with Gaines, Kylie, or Vigolo for their support.
We, we have not yet. We've talked about that. I know that Mayor Thomas mentioned contacting them.
I'm going to reach out to them on this matter.
All three, all three of them?
Yes, and as for their, their support on this, absolutely.
That's what's going to be my concern.
Okay. All right. Any comments or questions down here? All right, with any member of the public? Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Councilmember Wilkins.
I guess I do have a question. How did this happen?
Pardon me?
What'd you say? We can't hear you.
How did this happen?
Oh.
Like, why? I thought it was like.
You thought it was done?
What, what is your, what is your question specifically?
So this is horrible, right?
Well, that we're not funded.
Yes.
Yeah, well, we're, we're not currently funded. We hope that, again, this is the preliminary budget, and we hope with our explanation and our.
Okay, so we can explain to them how this happened, and then how we're going to correct it, hopefully, or maybe not, or it won't be, or.
Well, we're not sure how it happened. We, we questioned whether or not perhaps whoever did the budget, put those projects in, did not realize that our, the, the status of the lawsuit, and that it was ready to move forward at this time. And so that's why we wanted to write this letter, and hopefully get it corrected, and have the funding put in the final budget when it comes up in May.
But there's no guarantee.
There is no guarantee, no. It's up to the state and the governor, so.
But hopefully by highlighting the, the progress made, we can move forward in this.
So do you think that just this one, well, what, this is, one letter is enough, and then if we get support from our elected officials that, to help us, is there anything more that we can do?
I think that we will stay in close contact with the county and work in conjunction with them. They also, it's my understanding, approved a letter on their agenda today.
I know Judge Kingsbury is also advocating on behalf of.
Oh, I'm glad you said.
She, she is a signatory to the county.
County, county's letter.
Oh, she is.
She is, absolutely.
And the county.
Okay. Because she had quite a voice in, when this whole thing started, and, you know, well-respected, and really gave some convincing, as Wendy knows.
Wasn't there a group, when you folks, I know some of you went down to San Francisco?
Patty, Jack and I went down with Judge Kingsbury.
With Judge Kingsbury. And, and that was a panel of judges that were overseeing?
It was a judicial council.
Judicial council.
It was, it was quite an event.
Will this, would it make sense to send them a letter, whoever those current members are of the?
It's not a bad idea.
Maybe we could ask Suzanne.
We can, we can review that and see. I don't know if, if it's, you know, is the governor asking for their recommendation, and did it come from them? What courthouses were included in his budget? I'm assuming there was some conversation there. So we can follow up the judicial council. My contact that I had with the judicial council, I've found out is no longer there, so I'm trying to get a better contact, so that we can do something.
Well, Judge Kingsbury seemed to have a lot of input with that whole council, and whether they've changed it or not, I think her reputation is still there, and she had such convincing, I mean, she, you know, she really told it like it is.
You need to go before our new council, though.
That's what I'm thinking, though, that maybe, just a, I'm sorry, she's signing on with the Board of Supervisors. I'd like to see just a single letter from her, you know, because she had such an impact on, on it before.
Perhaps reaching out to Judge Kingsbury to see if there's any more contacts we need to make.
That's what I'm thinking.
There you go.
It's a good idea.
Yep.
Great. All right, this point, we'll open public comment on this, this item. All right, scene done. We'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for action.
I'm with staff's recommendation, and also with the inclusion to contact Judge Kingsbury for further recommendations.
I'll second it.
All right. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Item 12.3, acknowledgment of mayor's appointments to other agency commissions and boards, and the acknowledgment of the mayor's appointments to two council members to serve as the city council subcommittee interview team. So, Ms. O'Connell, hello, Regina.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Attached to this item, staff report is a roster listing recently proposed appointments by Mayor Thomas, to include the El Dorado County and multi-agency commissions and boards, as well as the two council members selected to serve as the subcommittee interview team. Just to remind the public, the full council interviews both the city's commissions, the Planning Commission and the Recreation and Parks Commission. However, the subcommittee interviews the candidates for the city's Measure H and Measure L committees, Community Pride Committee, the Personnel Board, and the Placerville Economic Advisory Committee, which, following the interviews, recommend the appointments to the full council at a regularly scheduled city council meeting. Tonight, it is, it is staff's recommendation to, one, acknowledge the mayor's appointments of council members to other agency commissions and boards, and, two, acknowledge the mayor's appointments of two council members to serve as the city council subcommittee interview team for the upcoming appointments to city committees and any vacancies that may occur on those committees in the coming year. Following tonight's action, the affected agencies will be notified by the city clerk of the reassignments. Thank you, that concludes staff's report.
Thank you, Regina. I just have to say, this is not my favorite task of the year, because, you know, everyone, there's, there's so many committees to go around, and, and so many dedicated people on this council that, that wish to serve, that it's, it's really difficult to make these appointments. But I want to, you know, thank each and every one of you that are serving on these boards and commissions for your dedicated efforts on behalf of the city of Placerville. So are there any council comments or questions at this point? Any member of the, maybe, oh, maybe a comment? Oh, sure.
I was going to say, I remember when I was, when I became mayor, and it was very difficult, and I had some, a little blowback, feedback, whatever, from some council members or a council member, and it was very difficult, so I know, I know exactly how it feels. And I just want to say, it was very disappointing not to see my name on anywhere on this list, not even as an alternate, even though I thought, as per conversation, the telephone, that I was going to have something. But, that said, I understand it's the mayor's prerogative, and I wish that would have been my prerogative. and I wish that would have been my prerogative as mayor. I didn't get that, but I say, I say yes, it's okay.
My understanding for our conversation was that you asked for leave of absence for six months, and so we can, you know, review it.
I said, I said two months. And I also said that, and while I was also told that my alternate on transportation and my transport, it was going to be upheld. But that is okay, I'm telling you. The mayor is the mayor.
All right. Any members of the council, or the audience, wish to speak on this? So, all right. So with that, I bring it back to the council for further comments?
Madam Mayor, first of all, I would just like to thank you for the continued assignment at LAFCO. It is an important organization that will soon be dealing with important city business.
And I appreciate you being willing to serve on that.
And working with the, the Board of Supervisors do appreciate our participation. And I thank Councilmember Codrici for backing me up on that. I also thank John for his continued dedication at CACOG. A lot of those meetings are early in the morning, late in the afternoons, a lot of commuting and what have you. And it's something that I'm not physically able to do, and I really appreciate his very active participation.
They're the same day as transportation, and he and Brian make this running.
It is so important that we stay at that table, because I remember when the city joined CACOG, and I can't imagine us not being in a part of the communications at that regional level to see what is going on around us, good and bad. So thank you for that. And just to address Councilmember Wilkins' comments, I also noticed that your name was missing, and I wanted to make sure to acknowledge that, because you had a number, you have a significant number of voter support, and they need to know why your name was not on this. I had nothing to do with taking over for you at Transit, which is a board that I have sat on happily a number of times in the past.
Before I came on.
Happy to do that. But it was my understanding that it was because you had requested sometime off.
I did not step down. No, I did not.
So I, so now...
Okay.
I will just leave that for the public record, then. It was my understanding that it was at your request.
No, it was not. Thank you.
John, did you have any comments?
No, I was just moving back.
Okay, all right, all right.
Do we need to, is receiving, any other comment? I'll move it, or what do we need to do?
We have to move it.
I don't think we even need to move it.
I don't.
Acknowledge it. Receive and acknowledge?
The mayor is the mayor.
All right.
Receive and acknowledge.
With that, I, with that, we receive and acknowledge this, and if something changes in the future, you know, we can, we can address it in the future, but as that, that my committee assignments are as presented tonight. So with that, there's been no other council reports since our last meeting.
That's not true.
I apologize.
Let's see, there you go.
There you go, all right.
I, I went to CACOG, and once again, it was wonderful. And let's see, the thing that, it was a long meeting. Oh, Brian was, Brian Veerkamp, Supervisor Veerkamp, was recognized for his being the chair of the CACOG board for the last year. He did a great job. They brought in a new executive director, which, in an organization like that, is no easy task, and replacing Mike, who had been there for five or six years.
Forever.
And had kind of really molded the organization. And they found James...
Corliss.
Corliss, thank you. James Corliss. And he, I think he's going to take it, the organization's in very interesting directions. That started with Mike, so I think it's a good thing. The primary conversation was around, they did their unmet transit needs, which is kind of interesting, because it's kind of like our unmet transit needs, where they, you know, the people come up and say, you guys need to do, they talked a lot about an elevator in one of the RT stations. But the biggest thing that they talked about was kind of re, this, I've talked about this before, where CACOG is kind of like wanting to reimagine itself just beyond its role as the, as the RTPA, and the keeper, and the mover of transportation funding. For the four counties down there, they act as basically a pass-through for El Dorado County and Placer County. But we do engage them a great deal. They provide a lot of value added in terms of planning and whatnot to us through their processes. But to really start to work on it more as a council of governments, and to engage on other issues beyond just the transportation. And so they're sort of, we've had retreats and stuff, and we're sort of noodling through that process. One of the things they talk about a lot is starting to refocus along economic development, regional economic development. They're working with the Brookings Institute to come up with, and I kind of call it reimagining Sacramento, and, and working with various groups, including the regions themselves, the city, the county, in the area of how you can position the region for, for economic development, you know, the future, future jobs, kind of changing the image of the place as a government town, that sort of thing. So anyways, very interesting. They compared us to a lot of different places, Salt Lake City, Indianapolis, places like that. You'd, I mean, I don't, I don't want to talk, I cannot talk about Salt Lake City. My mother was from Indiana, so I will talk about Indianapolis. I don't know why anybody would want to live there, but that's not the point. Some people do. When they mentioned that, when they mentioned Indianapolis, I went, really? Things must have changed. And Nashville. And I said, well, the problem with Nashville is Nashville is cool. And I'm not so sure.
Oh, Nashville is wonderful.
Sacramento has a long way to go to be cool. Anyway, they're actually going to be doing some, like, they're, they're talking about coming to us, probably either through the Transportation Commission, or at the county and the city boards, to sort of put that out there and show them what they're doing, and then requesting, you know, how we would engage in that process. So it's very exciting to kind of talk about something just beyond, you know, the dollar goes here, the dollar goes there, kind of stuff.
Is that like through their chamber, maybe?
A little bit, but more than, yeah, very, kind of similar, but without all the sort of glad-handing side of it. It's more on the, the planning and, and, you know, kind of positioning the governance side of the region for these changes. How do you get rid of, or how do you mitigate barriers to reasonably priced housing, for example?
Right.
How do you deal with homelessness? How do you deal with new kinds of transportation that are taking over? And then how does that all work towards economic development? So anyways, very interesting. It was a, it was a very long meeting. We didn't get out of there till like 12:30, which really is hard for folks. So anyway, but that was it, so.
John, along those lines, you were talking about regions being recognized. Mike Rinaldi went down to accept a plaque.
Yeah.
You want to mention that, that we were recognized for agriculture?
You probably know more about that than I do.
Well, I had a conversation with him, and what you're talking about is that CalCOG, I mean, CACOG is, is recognizing and they're working region-wise, and El Dorado County apparently was recognized for our outstanding economic contribution, and it was in the ag field.
Right, right.
And so that's, that's what I understand.
Yeah.
And I also wanted to say, through transportation, I have been representing transportation at the CalCOG meetings, and it's so important that CACOG keeps us on the list, because, you know, we're, we're kind of in, well, we are in competition with huge areas, Bay Area and Down South and stuff, and we really, you know, we're small potatoes, and we need a voice. And we, I really feel like El Dorado, we finally were given a seat at the table, but it's just one, you know, and so you should hear some of the conversations with all these, I mean, these people go back to national, and they, I mean, they go overseas, and, you know, we, it's difficult, and we're all in it, and what it boils down to is we're all after the same thing. All the things that, that John mentioned, the homelessness, the housing and everything. But, you know, they're 10 times bigger than we are, and so they want 10 times more money, and there's only so much. So it's a, it's a constant, you know. But I will say that I think, I really think CalCOG has come a long way in getting everybody to recognize what the other person needs. I'll put it that way.
Well, and it's a challenge, because, you know, when you listen to like this particular thing, they were talking about jobs, sales tax generation, jobs, revenue. Well, you know, if you're sitting here in Placerville, we don't need any more jobs. We have tons of jobs. There are thousands of jobs in the city. We have, as I've, you've heard me say ad nauseam, we have the best jobs-to-housing ratio in the region by far. I mean, by, by, almost like one, like, the best ones, we're almost at three, almost. And the other cities are in the one and a half, one and three quarters. I don't even know if there's another city in the region that has a two to one.
Do we measure those on an income level?
I know this is a thing that people say, what about the income, you know, like the kinds of jobs?
Right.
Correct. And the salary they receive, and are, does that enable them?
A third of the jobs, a third of the jobs in Placerville are at Marshall Hospital and El Dorado County. Now, every one of those jobs pays well, has benefits, you know, and they span a tremendous range of, you go to Marshall Hospital, you have entry-level jobs in housekeeping, dietary, those are entry-level jobs, all the way, well, all the way up to people that do heart surgeries and stuff like that, and make hundreds of thousands of dollars. But, you know, you can get a two-year degree, or a three-year degree, and you can walk into Marshall Hospital and make $100,000 if you're a nurse. That is not flipping McDonald's hamburgers. That is something that people in this region should be aspiring to.
That's my brother.
Yeah, exactly.
But like you said, it's a third of the, then what about the two-thirds?
Well, the other people work, well, you know, the schools.
Affordable housing.
All the, all the schools, Rayleigh's, you know, I mean, there's, there's plenty of good-paying jobs in this town. Not everybody's paying minimum wage. Most of the jobs, I bet you, are above minimum wage. We need to get away from this idea that the jobs in Placerville aren't any good, because they are. And they're plentiful.
Well, I think that's good to know, because, and we need to change that, you know.
Yeah. Anyway, so it's funny to listen to, because when we sit here, I go, well, jeez, we got, we generate huge amounts of sales tax, compared to the size of the town. We have all these jobs, and we sit around wondering if the city's going to be viable in 10 years.
Yeah.
And we have a successful city.
Could be a lot worse.
Oh, you could be a lot, well, yeah, you could live in all sorts of horrible places. But, but, but the idea is that we have the things that they are talking about in that venue, and we sit around and worry about whether or not we're going to be viable in 10 years.
Interesting discussion.
That's a sobering thought.
Ongoing discussions, absolutely.
Anyway, that's my CACOG report. Since no one else had one, I thought I'd take it.
So I just, real quick, want to mention, too, we had the Missouri Bike Trail opening.
Yes, nice picture.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. It was, it was very, it was very nice, and recognizing Bob Smart for all the work that he's done. And it's just so nice to drive by on Highway 50 now and not see all that construction going on. And, and I have not walked the trail, but I'm going to. One of these days, I am going to do that. But I understand it's great, so.
Bob is such an asset and advocate in our community.
Yes, he is.
He's, he's amazing. He's amazing. Does anyone have any requests for future agenda items? Actually, I have an additional item that I would perhaps like the council to consider on our agendas going forward this year. Got this idea that, you know, people have an idea of government as a faceless, nameless bureaucracy, bureaucracy, that's even hard to say. And even the political climate right now is just reinforcing this distrust of government. And, you know, as I was looking at our city staff, we are not a nameless, faceless bureaucracy. We are, our city staff is comprised of caring community individuals that are very dedicated to our community, that deal with constrained resources, and sometimes overwhelming challenges. And you do it with such, you know, grace and dedication. And I would like to have a section each month on our agenda items where we have staff recognition. Now, the point behind this is for our department, give, give our department heads the opportunity to recognize excellent service in their department. Now, I want to make it clear, this is not a, everyone gets a participation ribbon, and it's just a recycling recognition. It's an opportunity for all of you to bring forward excellent, you know, excellent service. And whoever you think demands that, or, you know, is, should, should be recognized for the council and the community for their excellence in service. So what does the council think?
So they get to choose and vote, and then bring it to us?
Yeah, at a staff level, and, and that would be for the department heads to recognize, not a lengthy presentation, but to have invited...
No, please.
Not a lengthy presentation, but allow the staff member to come and, you know, state why they're being recognized and...
So would it be kind of like the, when the law enforcement has, like, the Highway Patrol and the, they recognize one officer of their group that's done an outstanding job that year?
Actually, I'd like to just leave it up to staff. It doesn't even have to be once a month. But when, when someone feels that there's...
Oh, I see what you're saying.
When it's, when it's warranted, to come forward, have a mechanism for that, where we can present with a plaque of recognition and appreciation, let the community put a face to City Hall, and give us a chance to recognize people for their extraordinary efforts and dedication on behalf of the city.
You know, something along those lines, when you're talking, like, I was, we have our new, I don't know if you're going to bring this up or not.
Oh, I wasn't, but go ahead.
We now have our, our...
He was.
Okay, well, real quick, I'm thinking that maybe there might be a corner on here each month that could, we could pick out, and tell people what our staff does in all these different departments. Nobody has a clue, I don't think, really and truly.
That's the whole point behind this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So maybe if we did it in here, too, that we could, you know, it doesn't have to be one, but just tell what that department does, and who is in that department. I mean, just an idea.
And a blurb on our website?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good, all right.
Can I just give a little shout-out to Cleve?
Absolutely.
Tiny, today, beyond school, every Tuesday, every other Tuesday, beyond school walls with BBBS. He was there, and, so I don't know if he's going to get an award for, like, you know, but he's there with Timmy every...
That's one, and so are you. So really appreciate both of you, working with kids in our community. That's wonderful, wonderful. Appreciate that. All right. City manager and staff reports, item 15.1, update on effort to abate homeless camps. Mr. Morris?
I'm going to turn that over to Steve. Can you report on that, Steve, for me?
Hello, Steve.
I'd be happy to. When it comes to illegal campsites and abandoned ones, we're trying to put a process in place that's a completely total team effort. Our overall costs haven't really been determined yet. We need to dial it in, and we're planning on doing that. But the Placerville PD typically notifies our department when there isn't an abandoned campsite on city property. They help inspect the site to make sure it's safe for our crews to come in. Our park staff will do an assessment of the cleanup, and kind of define the magnitude of the, of the cleanup effort. Our community development department helps out with code enforcement if we determine that the property is not on city property, or that the site isn't on city property. And they help us with the designation of properties to make sure that, that what we're working on is, is definitely city property. Public Works helps with cleaning up and providing access to some of the sites. Good example, right now, they're helping us ride off of Highway 50. Aaron Brothers Environmental Incorporated is an independent contractor that we work with when we run into hazardous waste, and it's not safe for our, the level of training our, our staff has. Like I mentioned, Caltrans is a partner. They're helping us with the lane closure right now, so we have access to some of the sites on the west end of town. And I don't want to forget all the volunteers, the Friends of El Dorado Trail, specifically. They help us out weekly on the effort. The existing condition right now, we've identified about 15 abandoned campsites that we're aware of. We think it's going to take us about three weeks, weather permitting, to get them all cleaned up. And moving forward, our goal is to remove all abandoned campsites on city property within 48 hours. We kind of want to treat it like we do graffiti abatement. And I think we got a commitment from all the stakeholders to make that happen. It's going to come at an expense, as you can see here. Just our other contractual services with the independent contractors, the last two years, it's been about $17,000 a year to do that. And I see that number going up dramatically within the next 12 months. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
How much, how much was one of those log rolly things you were to buy for the pool? About?
I think it was $4,000, $5,000.
So that's like four log rolly things that we are not getting, because we, I, now to be serious, I went out with Jackie Noe out on the trail down towards Ray Lawyer Drive, and I went to that place where you folks had started to do the, this was last week, I think, started to do the cleanup there. And it's a pigsty. I mean, it is an absolute, honest-to-God pigsty. And, I mean, I have, I have a heart and a bit of a soul, and, and a great deal of compassion, but I do not know why people who are living in unfortunate circumstances also then have to just leave their trash everywhere it is. I mean, I just don't get that.
How did that grow so? How did that grow so big so fast?
Oh, I think it's like a mushroom, you know, once it gets going. Well, once people start to aggregate, then they do it very quickly. I don't, it obviously doesn't take a lot to move in, and then, once it gets done, then they get, they get moved out, you know.
I really appreciate your diligent efforts and your, that of your crews, Steve, and I for one am, am grateful that we have a contract services coming in to clean that, because I do not want our public works crews dealing with the kind of filth that is in those abandoned camps, as, as we saw along the walking trail this last year that took a Herculean effort to abate. And it's, it's a real shame that we have to spend our city resources in this matter, and yet it is really important that we stay on top of it, as our staff is doing, and really appreciate the creative thought and proactive efforts going forward, and as we go into budget season, you know, the council is all ears in what you think, you know, it's going to take to have a proactive effort to, you know, keep making progress in this area, because, you know, we, we can't just turn our city over to that. And just, I, I know I've mentioned this before, but I, I have to say that along with this abatement, there does come progress, because one of, as I've told some of our police crews, there was someone that was arrested last year on the bike trail, and for this, you know, the, the no camping ordinance, he was living on the bike trail, and he was my brother-in-law. And because of our city enforcing its no camping ordinance, it once again caught his ear and linked him up with Veterans Services, and it is now six, seven months later, and he went through treatment programs again, as he has many, many times, but this time it took, and he's now, you know, in his own home and sustainable and not abusing, and it is because we had the courage to enforce our city ordinance and saying, you know, this is not okay in our city. So there are victories, this is not just a hammer, there are victories in this, it's really important, so I appreciate that.
So I'm thinking, what Steve said, that they, their goal is 48 hours, and I, I think if we can manage to get there, that we're not going to have, if it's not allowed to expand and, you know, get so bad, that, that, I think that's when we run into real problems and a lot of the expense. Am I right, Steve? Or no?
Yes, you're right.
Okay. Anyway, any other comments?
Oh, I have several, but I'll only issue a couple. First of all, I had requested this item when, I guess maybe it was the last storms that we had actually knocked the last of the leaves off the trees, and it became painfully apparent how large the camps are from Lower Main Street and Long Fornie Road and what I call the new section of the Placerville Trail. And the chief and his forces and Steve were aware of the growing problem, and then it was just massively visible about two or three weeks ago to all the traveling public, all of our citizens. And over the last week or so, kind of like Councilmember Clarici mentioned, I've poked around a little bit and realized that just how big and how nasty these particular camps are. Steve, do you have any idea what the Aaron's hazmat bid is for this particular cleanup round?
It's based on time and materials. I'd say the mess we have right now surpasses the one that we had last year on the other end of town, and that one was 17,000 to, in contractual services to clean that up. Well, there was approximately eight, there were several sites. There was that one really big one that, that some council members went on a walk with me, and then there was about three more, about half that size farther up the trail.
Plus, the city crews built an access road to facilitate, which is understandable, so we've got the public works expenses.
Oh, it just goes on and on. Yeah, Caltrans has been out there giving us lane closures, and, you know, I went down the list, the PD has spent, they do sweeps for us every morning to make sure that it's safe to get in there. They're, they're helping out those that are still encamped. Our parks crew deals with it daily.
Yeah.
Community development helps us out daily, almost weekly at least, trying to determine whose property these, the encampments are on. Public Works, the same, so, and volunteers, they're amazing. I don't know where we would be without our, our friends of the trail. They, seriously, they, they pick up the trail daily for us.
That's the story of our town. I keep saying it over and over, if it wasn't for volunteers.
Very blessed to have all of that community involvement and all of the willingness from our various departments to work together on it. And I, I've mentioned it to a couple of department heads that I'd like to meet, we met last year a couple of different times, the trail, I had an acronym for it, but it, basically an operating committee to work with the various agencies, including Caltrans, and maybe early February, we can set something up, and we'll get Jackie Noe and her representation for the trail users, as well as our Recreation and Parks Commission, and now Mayor Thomas, you were set, we went, we met on that last year. So if we can get a small group together and see what we need to focus on and get some budget numbers, the, as Councilmember Clarici's mentioned, that, you know, there's just a very serious issue, and the best we can do is manage it. Since we now have almost year-round fire season, the risks last year were just unbelievable, and why certain parts of town didn't catch fire, I do not know, it was just pure luck, and I just don't feel comfortable counting on luck year after year. These camps can constitute a hazard to not only themselves, but to all the property owners and citizens, and as well as our, all of our first responders. So we cannot allow the camping to go on, the use of the warming fires, et cetera. I know Sergeant Cannon, last year, in November, during a windstorm, found several camp, unattended campfires along the Fornie Road section of the trail. Why that hillside again didn't burn, I, is just pure luck. So I see a real, we need to, to address this, we need to address it with the community members, whatever their concern may be on it, and I really appreciate Steve's idea of the 48-hour response and treating it like the graffiti, because it is allowed to fester, the expense just multiplies daily, and the hazards are just not acceptable, whether it be health and safety, danger to children and, and, and folks out there using the trail, or to the community itself, so, thank you.
I have a real quick question. You mentioned trying to find out who the property owners are, and once you do, do we have any, can we, can we make them like fence off their property, or what kind of teeth do we have to require the property owners where all this is happening to stop it, or to assist us? Or make them clean it up? I, I don't know, what, what kind of, what's the?
Well, under our city code, where we have an accumulation of garbage, rubbish, refuse, or a fire hazard, those kinds of things are nuisances. So the city does have the ability to abate those nuisances, so typically we'll notify the property owner who is ultimately responsible for maintaining their property in, in decent shape, whether or not people are camping there illegally. They may not know, many times we're dealing with absentee land, landowners, they live elsewhere. And so we, we do our best to contact them and then give them a specified period of time to clean the property. Now, if they don't, we can either bring it to the council, where the council then deter, you know, can declare it a nuisance, and we can levy fines, or the city has the ability to use its own staff or crew to clean up the property, and then we do have the ability to lean the property for those expenses.
Right, and I, I kind of think that maybe we need to start getting a little more aggressive and do that, because once, you know, the word is out that we're going to do this, we might have a little bit more cooperation and, you know. I know it's more staff time, but still, I think this is a real important issue. I, that, I don't think it's fair that the city has to bear the financial responsibility for, for a, a property owner, that, you know, that's just what my personal feeling.
I was just going to mention, on that item, you recall, two or three months ago, Councilmember Acuna talked about bringing back a new code enforcement program.
Right, yes.
We are working on that, and we, we will be bringing that back, probably as part of the budget, but maybe before that, so that is in the, the works right now, and that, this would fall in line with part of that program.
Okay, good. All right. Thank you for the discussion and the update, Steve, appreciate it. Cleve, do you have any other updates?
I do have two other items that I wanted to mention quickly. One is, Councilmember Riley mentioned, our new newsletter that we have come out with. This is just so for the public, if anyone's watching out there, this is designed to be an electronic newsletter. We are not printing a number of copies. I did put copies for the public that is here tonight on the back table. If you do not have the ability to look at it electronically, please come into City Hall, let us know, we will be happy to give you a hard copy of it. Otherwise, you will find it on our city website, available for you to download and look at and read, et cetera. It'll be on the front page of the, our city website, so.
Sure, appreciate us expanding our, the ways that we communicate with our residents. I think that's.
Is it on Facebook?
It, it's on our website. We, we, we can put it on Facebook also, yeah, we have our Facebook site, so yes, we'll, we'll put it on both.
Okay, sounds great.
The, the last time I want to mention, as you recall, at our last meeting, we had the sewer lateral ordinance that we discussed, and we were directed to come back with a workshop, so I wanted to propose three dates for that to you. I, I think one is preferable, but we'll see what you say. The first one is February 14th, Valentine's Day, we could all come together.
That's what I want to do on Valentine's Day.
We're probably not busy that day, right? I hope my wife's not watching, but, the next one, these are all Wednesdays, by the way. The second is February 28th, and then the last one is March 7th. We were leading towards the March 7th date, is the one that seems to work best for the facility and would work best for us, but.
Didn't we do parking last year on Valentine's Day?
We did something.
We did something on Valentine's Day last year that was not desirable at all, if I remember correctly.
Can I ask the council then to get back with Cleve tomorrow with your, your availability on those dates?
I have all those Wednesdays open.
Okay.
Just for Cleve.
Yeah, if you would, please let us know, and, because we want to start advertising that, make sure we notify everybody that, that wants to be there for that, and that gives us a little bit of time. We've talked a little bit about what we want to do there, and, and, you know, put some diagrams together, et cetera, to help people understand what we're trying to accomplish.
And when we do a, I know we, we were too late for the utility bills, but when we do a banner on Town Hall, if we can get it out, you know, several weeks in advance, and put the topic, perhaps, on that sewer laterals, that, I think that'll be really important, because there were a lot of folks that were interested in this, and were confused about it, and to give folks a chance to weigh in on, on this and have a good informative discussion on it, so.
Right.
Okay, great.
That's it.
When's the, when's the meeting for the sewer and water rates in February?
That is the next, yeah. Your next meeting is for Valentine's.
It's going to be a massive.
I was going to bring that up under the upcoming, it's not listed there, it's not listed there, I apologize, but yes, the water sewer rate study hearing will be at your next meeting on February 13th.
February 13th.
All right. In addition to Blair's Lane Stop Sign, Broadway's design contract, the Drone Construction Award contract with Drake Hagelin, and for Clay Street Realignment Project and Water Reclamation Facility Sodium Hydroxide Pump System, that will be a fun, jam-packed meeting, so pack a picnic lunch and come on down and.
Just so you know, we, those may not all be on there, we may limit that, because of the, the water and sewer rate hearing, we, we want to give that the attention that it needs, so we'll take a look at it.
All right. With that, everyone, thank you for being here this evening, and with that, we are adjourned.